We call to order the February 13, 2018, meeting of Oshkosh County Council to order. Would you please take the roll?
Pansky, here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Pack.
Here.
Palmary.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Herman.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
President Seck.
I will ask everyone to stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilperson Pansky.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allegiance. Would you please let us know who you are, where you go to school, and what your favorite subjects are?
I'm Heidi Colbert, and I go to Oshkosh North High School. And my favorite subject in school is communities, which is English and history combined in one. And we learn about everything that happens in Oshkosh, and we go out in the community, and we try and help with the problems. So, that's my favorite. That's what I have.
That's a great program at Oshkosh North. So, thank you. We now have a new staff member to introduce, Mr. Davis. Would you please do the honors?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce City Assessor Luke Elger. You might have seen him at our budget meetings over the last few years. He's been the deputy assessor over the last three or so years. And prior to that, he was a property appraiser for the city. He's been with the city since 1998, so he's basically worked his way up to city assessor.
Congratulations. Thank you. Now, we have a proclamation for the Oshkosh Elks Order of, Oshkosh Order of Elks 150th Anniversary. Would you folks like to come forward, please? Whereas on the 150th anniversary of the establishment of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, we celebrate the Oshkosh and Oshkosh Elks Lodge 292's commitment to selflessly serving others in need across our great state. Whereas founded in New York City on February 16, 1867, by Charles Elgonon, Sidney Vivian, and a handful of friends, the Order has spread across the country with nearly 1 million Elks members and a network of nearly 2,000 lodges. Whereas dedicated to charity, justice, and patriotism, the Elks invest millions of hours each year to build a stronger community, assist homeless veterans, and to assure kids steer clear away from drugs. To that end, Elks have dispersed over the course of the Order's history more than 3.6 billion in cash, goods, and services to the nation's veterans, the disadvantaged, and handicapped, and patriotic and civic programs. Whereas the Elks Lodge 292 always puts the needs of others before themselves, from delivering 151 Christmas baskets to area families, to many youth programs such as Soccer Shoot, the local DARE program, and many others, the Elks answer the call when asked to serve. They are one of the first organizations on the ground during a crisis, providing needed supplies and to relieve to those affected. Whereas each day, they impart lessons of hard work, dedication to community, faith in God, and to support who simply may need a hand. Now therefore, I, Stephen J. Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, in recognition of 150 years of service on behalf of the City Council, and all of our citizens, extend our highest conundation to the Elks Lodge 292, and hereby do proclaim February 16, 2018, as Oshkosh Elks Lodge 292 Celebration Day, and call upon the people of Oshkosh to recognize and celebrate the special observance. So, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the city and the council, and especially you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing the accomplishments of our Order. We've, we were chartered in Oshkosh on July 11, 1885, 95, I'm sorry, and we've served our community ever since that point and that day, and we look forward to the future in serving our community and our citizens again.
Thank you.
As exalted ruler of Oshkosh Elks Lodge 292, it has been our pleasure to serve this community and the surrounding areas, and lending a helping hand to those who are in need. And we look forward to a continued partnership with Oshkosh and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you. See you Saturday. Next on our agenda, we have a staff presentation with the Oshkosh Avenue Traffic Impact Analysis. Who will be?
Mr. Robbie's going to do it, but as he approaches the podium, this is not a repeat of the workshop that was held a couple of weeks ago, but we felt, given certain questions that were asked at the meeting, we thought a brief presentation to council in preparation for discussion about this on February 27 would be appropriate. So, James and his staff have a brief presentation for the council.
Yes, thank you, Mark. As Mark mentioned, this is not going to be a reiteration of the workshop of a couple of weeks ago. It is a much shortened version, so if you haven't had a chance to view that, if you weren't able to attend, I do highly recommend that, because we are just going to touch on some of the highlights and some of the recommendations, and not the full-depth analysis that Ms. Groyle from KAL Engineering went into that evening. A little bit of the overview background, you know, I believe there was a handout in your packets on Friday, you know, kind of talking about some of the, some of the things we're going to touch on. A little bit of the background, some of the corridor options that were presented at the workshop, you know, what may or may not be impacted by special assessments, some of our next steps, and then any questions or additional information that you are looking for in advance of your meeting on the 27th. A little bit of the current configuration, air photo of the current existing conditions. Oshkosh Avenue is a four-lane street, two lanes in each direction, east and west, with, you know, signals at Northwest Field. I chose to focus on this intersection for this part of the corridor, as we, it will kind of build upon that as we continue to go through some of the options and scenarios. The current configuration, Oshkosh Avenue is a 66-foot right-of-way, as I mentioned, a four-lane street, two lanes in each direction. At the intersections, there is no turning movement, separation, or turning lanes, so left-turning traffic does have a tendency to impact through traffic and cause some delays, or the possibility of rear-end accidents, or, you know, if they're turning into traffic and they misjudge perhaps some other types of accidents. And there is no terrace along Oshkosh Avenue, and all that exists is about a six-foot sidewalk that is immediately adjacent to the curb, so it makes, you know, snow removal operations on Oshkosh Avenue very difficult, and also making pedestrian accommodations very difficult. A little bit of a cross-sectional view, kind of showing you that description of what the street actually looks like right now. Yes, I should have mentioned earlier, a copy of this presentation was on your chairs this evening as well, so you have a copy. Some of the assumptions that went into building the TIF 34 and TIF 35 project plans and budget assumptions. Our plan, as we built those TIF plans, was to maintain a four-lane undivided cross-section between Keller Street and Sawyer Streets. Additional right-of-way would be necessary to construct turn lanes at Westfield Street and establish a terrace along the north side of the streets, then develop those turn lanes at Westfield Streets, and obtain additional right-of-way necessary to construct an additional southbound lane on the approach to the Keller Street Roundabout, and then developing that southbound lane. So here again, you see a similar graphic to we saw earlier of the existing conditions. This outlines the extent of the corridor improvements that were included in the TIF 34 and TIF 35 plans. So you can see the additional right-of-way addition of the terrace and the sidewalk have been built to the north side of the street in conjunction with the planned redevelopment of that additional area. We felt it would be feasible to get right-of-way in that direction, whereas it would not be feasible to get right-of-way to the south. So those were the assumptions on a corridor-wide improvement that were included in the TIF plans as they were developed. Again, looking a little bit at that base model assumption of what went into building the TIF plans for TIF 34 and 35, you see the turn lane development at Westfield Street, so that cross-section will be very similar whether you're heading eastbound or westbound. The two through lanes would continue, and then there'd be the development of the dedicated left-turn lane. The remainder of the corridor stays as is in the development of the TIF project plans. In the budget assumptions, as we develop the TIF project plans, you know, corridor-wide improvements, there was only about $345,000 included between the two TIFs, and that was for streetlights and streetscaping. The development of the left-turn lanes at Westfield Street, there was just under $600,000 included in the plan. The Keller Street Roundabout Lane Development was about $385,000 in the plans, and then the Sawyer Street Intersection improvements included in TIF 35. Those are, those are the numbers that were included in the TIF project plans as we developed those budgets. The options that were presented at the workshop are a four-lane undivided, similar to the current development, with the exception of the added turn lanes. The two-way left-turn lanes, you know, as we've seen in Morack Avenue, Jackson Street, and a few others, you know, develop that twin left-turn lane to get left-turning traffic out of the through movements, to free up some of that space in the street to reduce backups. And then the four-lane divided option, which would add a raised median or a boulevard-type section in between the two directions on Oshkosh Avenue. A little bit of the logistics of what that would look like, so the four-lane undivided, developing the turn lanes at Westfield Street as presented by KAL Engineering, also developing a little bit of terrace space and maintaining the sidewalk on each side of the street. So that does require additional right-of-ways, you know, 10 to 15 feet of additional right-of-way in order to develop those turn lanes, and five or so feet of additional right-of-way to develop small terraces through the remainder of the corridor. The two-way left-turn lanes, what was recommended in the recommendations presented was a five-lane twiddle between Keller Street and Eagle Street. You know, that expands the right-of-way from 66 to 81 to 87, so, you know, almost a 20-foot expansion in the right-of-way in order to develop that five-lane twiddle in that section of the street. From Eagle Street to the Fox River, a three-lane twiddle, similar to what we've seen in some of the road diets that we've implemented. The nice thing about this is, you know, you are able to develop a terrace and do some streetscaping while maintaining the same right-of-way width. Some of the drawbacks are, you are going from two lanes in each direction to one, so it does create some traffic capacity issues and challenges, especially as you're approaching the Sawyer Street intersection and the lift bridge over the Fox River. The four-lane divided section, as presented, the corridor between Keller Street and Eagle Street would be where the development of the raised median or boulevard section would be included. From Eagle Street to the Fox River, there is not enough right-of-way, so that would continue, I believe the recommendation was to continue the four-lane undivided section through there. And then again, developing the turn lanes at the Westfield Street intersection, you can see kind of the median narrows down to develop those turn lanes. In order to develop this cross-section, you'll be looking at approximately 15 to 20 feet of additional right-of-way space being necessary to accommodate this width. As we mentioned, the four-lane undivided is very similar to the base model assumption in the TIF plan. Estimated costs that were included in the TIF plan for this totaled approximately $940,000, being the Westfield turn lanes, streetlights, and streetscaping. Obviously, the corridor improvements did not include the, you know, the specific intersections at Keller and Sawyer. Those were developed separately. The two-way left-turn would likely require full reconstruction of Oshkosh Avenue in order to create a street that looks well-thought-out and well-designed, and not just kind of trying to tack something onto the side and trying to tie it back into, to the properties to the north. The four-lane divided likewise would also likely require full reconstruction to give it that well-thought-out, designed, and constructed look. We did not have the opportunity to complete a cost estimate of developing the two-way left-turn option. However, the four-lane divided option from Keller Street to Eagle Street is estimated to be about $4.2 million. The development of the two-way left-turn in that area would be very similar, although slightly lower in cost.
James, I'm just wondering if there will be a cost estimate on the two-way left-turn lane before, what do we have next, the Plan Commission Neighborhood Meeting, or?
We can work on getting that developed. We just, you know, we did not have time to get all of the options developed at this time, so we kind of went to the high end to be able to get you that information tonight, but we can work on getting that developed.
Preferably before the 20th or the 27th, you think?
We should be able to have something rough by the 20th. It is going to be very close to the four-lane divided option. About, the only difference really is going to be the lack of curb and gutter, and the streetscaping items that go in the median section, so I anticipate it to be relatively close to the four-lane divided at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Typically, we don't provide numbers to the Plan Commission. We try to limit their scope of discussion to planning issues so that they don't get off. The budget issues are within council's purview, and that, that would be our goal, to make sure that you have that information.
Councilperson Palmary.
So, James, then, the two-way left-turn, the twiddle, is the only one that doesn't expand significantly the width? Is that correct?
To develop the five-lane twiddle between Keller Street and Eagle Street does expand significantly the right-of-way. Developing the three-lane twiddle between Eagle Street and the Fox River would not require right-of-way expansion.
So the two-way left-turn twiddle is the one I'm looking at? It says 65 feet? So it's actually less than existing?
That's, that's the three-lane option between Eagle Street and the Fox River.
Right.
The five-lane option is 81 to 87 feet of right-of-way.
So, why would that two-way left-turn lane be only slightly less than the four-lane divided?
Because the four-lane divided construction is only between Keller and Oshkosh Avenue, or Keller and Eagle Street, I'm sorry. And that's where the five-lane twiddle is as well, so, you know, that construction area is very similar.
With the divided one, the divided option, would, okay, I'm thinking of, as we're looking at expanding an extra 20 or so feet in most of these options, what that does for pedestrians in terms of crossings? And I know in the workshop, there was some discussion about some of those having a little better, or more pedestrian-friendly, but is it the assumption that in the divided, that basically they're crossing half before they cross the other half?
That is one of the benefits of the divided, is you get a refuge area in the middle of the street, so, you know, if you're not able to fully cross, you've got that refugery in the middle of the street, so you can get across halfway and then get across the second half.
If we keep it clear, right, of snow and ice?
Certainly, and if there's, if there's a pedestrian crossing in there, there'd be, you know, ramps and such that would need to be kept clean.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. The street construction that we did this year in Oshkosh Avenue, was that assessed, that was assessed to the property owners? The storm work that we did?
The sanitary work, no. That was just patchwork and utility work.
You said the right-of-way would be to, we would have to obtain right-of-way on the north side of Oshkosh Avenue, correct?
That would be the plan that we're working on.
How far, how far down are we going to have issues with Mary Jewel Park, which has deeded land only for park, not for roadway?
I have not compared it to those deed restrictions at this time, but, you know, the assumption is between Keller and Eagle Street as presented.
Okay. I guess, and I was unable to make that workshop, my thinking is, is that, I'd hate to pass on anything to the citizens, they didn't ask for this, and they're getting it. So I think we need to take that into consideration, that their traffic's going to increase tremendously, and I don't think we should be assessing them for roadwork that was not anticipated.
We have that, the model, the different models and options in...
Couple more slides.
Leave our next slide, so we're getting close to that, because there are significant considerations that we need to...
Yeah. I think it's something that we really need to take considerable look, because, you know, they were disrupted already, issue with all the road construction and the reconstruction of the intersection. Now they're going to be disrupted again for maybe a whole summer, so I think...
And that's why we're trying to get you this information now in advance of that meeting, and in advance of the public neighborhood meeting at the Plan Commission, so those are things you can start kind of mulling over and thinking about, you know, before we start, you know, asking for that direction. You know, so that's why we're trying to get you, you know, the kind of this short version of the information, and, you know, kind of drum up any of those questions, so we can start, you know, if there is additional information we need to get for you, that we can start working on that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
James, do you have more on your presentation?
A couple of slides, yeah. I'm, I'm okay to take questions as we go, you know, certainly as we just did. If I got something that's coming up here real shortly, I will certainly let you know. Yep, the next slide, as you indicated, you know, the special assessments. As we built, you know, kind of that base model where we were just kind of adding onto the, developing the turn lanes at Westfield Street, you know, we had not anticipated any special assessments being levied as a part of that construction, because it was not a complete reconstruct. It was just developing turn lanes in the vicinity of that intersection. Any option that would require full reconstruction of Oshkosh Avenue, whether it be the twiddle or the four-lane divided, our special assessment policy does, you know, is designed for those full reconstruct scenarios, so, you know, that would be something that the council would have to mull over as to whether you wanted to proceed with, as the policy indicates, or do something different. The new streets north of Oshkosh Avenue, there had been no special assessments planned to Oshkosh Corporation, but the other properties we had anticipated having special assessments against. Kind of the next steps, Traffic Review Advisory Board did have discussion tonight, and kind of develop a recommendation to bring to the council. The Plan Commission Neighborhood Meeting is scheduled for February 20th, and then, you know, as we had mentioned, this will, we anticipate having this back before you for some direction on February 27th.
James, if I could maybe go back to the special assessment one, full reconstructs typically trigger special assessments, so, but there are limits, especially for residences that are along major corridors. There's a maximum width of, I believe, 32 feet?
For residential properties, yes, 32.
So, for example, the properties on the south side would only be assessed for the first 32 feet of width. They don't get assessed...
For one-third of that.
One-third, but it's the 32 feet. It's not the, if the council had a 10-lane highway in front of somebody's house, it's still only going to be 32 feet, and it's one-third of that cost. Commercial properties, I believe the maximum is 48 feet?
Yes, for commercial properties, the maximum width is 48 feet, and assessed at 37.5%.
So it just gives you a rough idea, but clearly, if you do a reconstruct, and the condition of the road does not warrant a reconstruct at this time, I'm not sure the age of it in terms of the assessment policy, but if you're, if there's any question about does, do we need to reconstruct the road, with the exception of the intersections, the answer is, quite frankly, no, it's not necessary.
And I think that kind of leads, leads into one other thing that, you know, we didn't have spelled out necessarily in the presentation, but we wanted to give you as information. KAL Engineering did look at the function of the Oshkosh Avenue corridor. If it was left as is with the additional traffic, it would function for a period of time. So if we wanted to not do a full reconstruction of Oshkosh Avenue and program that into a CIP, you know, maybe five years out or so, you know, that is an option where, you know, the corridor would function, just not as, at the same level of service as we had desired during that interim time period. So we could get ourselves set up with the right-of-way necessary for whatever ultimate option you would wish to implement, and, you know, kind of wait that out and plan and program for it in a future year, so...
But we would still special assesses for the streets we punch to the north, because obviously some development is getting discussed. You were aware of, there's movement afoot about doing something, and similar to whether Oshkosh Corp. was going there or not, when you punch streets in like that, the cross, the cross-streets pay for those things, and those would not be the residential areas. Those would be the new commercial areas that would be getting developed, and that'd be our intent as well.
Okay, just one comment. At the workshop, as I recall, the feeling was that this is becoming a major gateway that most of the people at the workshop felt that the four-lane divided was the best way to go, considering how important this corridor will become as years go by. That's the only comment I wanted to make. Councilman Palmary.
James, could you just remind us, then, in this study, did we get a traffic count?
Yes, the KAL Engineering did do traffic counts.
And what was that number?
I do not have the numbers with me tonight, I'm sorry, but, you know, that is a part of their final report, which we're anticipating receiving, I think, tomorrow. Alan, was it tomorrow?
But typically, they're graded on an A through an F, kind of like school, except they do have an E in there, but they grade them that way. And anything below a C is cause for concern, and they took a look at that for, going out to, what, 20, 45?
Our 30-year forecast, so, yeah, we're, our goal with the Traffic Impact Analysis was to maintain a level of service C in that study year 30 years out.
And that will also, that final report will also include crash data, right?
I don't recall if it had crash data included.
She mentioned that at the workshop. I just didn't know if they planned to include that. That was a question I asked during the workshop, too.
I will have to look into that and follow-up. I'm going to make myself a note here, real quick.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. This is actually a question for Mr. Collins. If we did a undivided four-lane, and we put, obviously, traffic lights would go in there, would we be more of a designated left-turn arrow, or would we be doing more like the state does with the flashing yellow?
That's a good question. We could do it either way.
I guess my thinking is, if it's a designated left-turn, traditionally, what, they're left on 30 to 40 seconds, so that that turn lane has the right-of-way? That can be extended, right?
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have to look at the modeling and program it, but, yeah, that's a good question. With being, with it being connecting highway, it would ultimately be our decision, but if the state were doing it, they would do the flashing yellow, so...
Okay.
That's something we'd have to consider.
Is that, is that a higher cost for the city if we would go with a designated left-turn?
No.
With the lights, it's not a big deal, right? It's already there, the infrastructure's there, because we have a three-stop-and-go light there now, right?
We'd have the capability to change it.
Change it any way we want. I'm just thinking, like Mr. Robbie's saying, you know, maybe putting it in the CIP, see where we're at, because even traffic counts, the traffic data, accidents aren't going to be, we aren't going to know, because it's a, it's a three-way intersection now, not a four-way intersection, so your accidents at that intersection are going to be totally different than what could potentially happen, depending how that street was reconstructed. And I know, I know the Oshkosh Police Department could provide us that accident data pretty quick, but my concern was, you know, how we would, as a traffic, because we also would have probably bus stops at that intersection, too, right? We currently do now, or just down from there, I think it's down...
There's one, there's one pretty close to there on each side of the street.
Yeah. On each side, right?
Yep.
So would we be relooking at that, too, as a bus stop area, too?
Well, we wouldn't put the stop at the traffic signal.
Right.
They would probably stay close to where they are now, but that's, that's another consideration that they'll probably be, I would assume, between any transit riders, but additionally, we talked at the workshop... I would assume, between any transit riders. But additionally, we talked at the workshop about pedestrians from Evergreen and from daycare center, that they'll, they'll probably be additional pedestrians in the area. And that would be something that, that traffic signal would help with.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Our primary reason was to give you an idea. We have sixty-six feet of right of way out there currently. Any options above that are going to obviously cost more in terms of planning for that right of way and the cost itself to reconstruct if we go that way. So anytime between now and two weeks from now, we certainly welcome any questions that come up, whether they come up after you maybe look at the Traffic Review Board meeting or the neighborhood meeting. We're certainly going to take notes from the Neighborhood Input Meeting and incorporate that into whatever we present to council at the next meeting as well.
And the Neighborhood Input Meeting is on February?
February 20th at the Plan Commission.
We're doing it at the Plan Commission. We figured that was the best way.
Right, the council has no further questions. We'll move on to citizen statements. Citizens are to address the council. Only statements limited to five minutes must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address the future meeting unless it not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Pam, did anyone register to speak at this point?
I have no one.
Thank you. We will move on now to consent agenda items, which are items of a routine administrative, administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or council, common councilman requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, did anyone register to speak to any of these items?
I have no one registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Palmary.
Just wanted to ask, James, regarding eighteen sixty-eight, on the work that's being done on Oregon Street, which has already started, I've noticed. So this is for the purpose of expanding from Eighth to the Fox River, whereas before we were going from Eighth to Sixteenth, correct, on Oregon?
Yes, there is storm sewer being constructed all the way to the bridge. And the potential for adding and installing laterals as a part of that storm sewer construction was missed in the initial resolution the first time. So that would be the only assessment potential is for storm laterals.
So I guess my question is, and this comes from some folks on Oregon Street. If we are looking at a bridge, some kind of bridge construction and reconstruction, six years-ish from now, the work that gets done all the way to the Fox River, does that end up getting redone?
The only thing that's being done between Eighth and the river is the storm sewer construction itself. And then the pavement will be patched. Our plan, all along as we had been, you know, programming for the original schedule of the bridge would be to plan on reconstructing that remainder from Eighth to the north while the bridge would be closed. So with the delay in the bridge project, you know, we have to evaluate whether the existing pavement can survive that long or if we need to do some sort of a Band-Aid over it until we get to the bridge.
And then just one, one other question on that is, did they already have the neighborhood meeting on this construction project? I think there was one that was scheduled, or is that still yet to come?
There's the, the general CIP neighborhood meeting. Steve, I think there's a property owner meeting scheduled for the next council night, correct?
We have the public hearing scheduled for the next council meeting. Prior to that, we're going to have several staff here, some staff available to answer special assessment questions primarily, and other staff and the contractor to be here to try to answer more specific access ones at that point in time. And then prior to the start of construction, we will hold another meeting for all of the impacted property owners to attend prior to the start of construction and then weekly during construction as well.
So just to repeat that then, at the next council meeting, when the public hearing is taking place, staff's going to be available prior to that?
Beginning at four P.M.
Here, in this room?
For that, we're going to have people down in room three-ten, in case it runs over, that they can continue to meet down there and not interfere with the council.
The construction-related questions will be in three-ten. Assessment-related questions we'll be addressing in four-oh-four. As Steve mentioned, we think the construction-related questions may run past the six o'clock start time of the council meeting. That's why we wanted them in three-ten so they could continue.
Have they gone out for notice?
They have not. They will go out with the public hearing notice.
Friday.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other councilmen wishing to speak to anything on the consent agenda. So would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid six.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to pending ordinances. The first is ordinance eighteen dash seven-seven, modify parking regulations on Eleventh Avenue. Pam, did anyone want to wish to speak to this?
I have no one registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I see no one wishing to speak to this ordinance, so please take the role.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid six.
Ordinance eighteen dash seven-eight, repeal ordinance pertaining to prohibition, prohibited areas for animals. Did anyone sign up for this?
No one is registered.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid six.
Ordinance eighteen dash seven-nine, amend ordinance authorizing public construction for certain classes of work. Did anyone register?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid six.
Ordinance eighteen dash eighty, approve zone changes, zone change from urban industrial UI to single-family residential nine district in perins SR dash nine, close perins sixteen oh-three, sixteen oh-seven, and sixteen eleven. Ashland Street, Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid six.
We now have two new ordinances. There will be no formal action taken on either one tonight. The first is ordinance dash eighteen dash eight-one, approve request to attach to the city from town of Algoma slash Pickard Attachment, Ninth Street Road and Clearville Road. Next is ordinance eighteen dash eight-two, amend chapter two of the City Municipal Code to combine the Traffic Review Advisory Board and Parking Utility Commission into a single traffic and parking advisory board. We now have new resolutions. The first is Resolution eighteen dash eight-three, approve agreement for archaeological data recovery plan for portion of Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course Site slash University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents. Did anyone register to speak to that?
I have no one registered.
Would you bring it back to the council for a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I do have one question, I think, for James. This is a lot of money, but this is, I think, citizens should know that we are required by the state of Wisconsin to do these type of digs and properties such as this. So if you kind of want to explain the process and what all is involved.
Yeah, actually, a part of, you know, any permitting through the state of Wisconsin, so through the DNR or, you know, other agencies, you know, something they do is a review of archaeological records in the area. We've had in, in past years, projects get delayed due to having to, you know, do additional information gathering. So one of the things that we had started doing is doing that research in advance of submitting permit applications in an effort to not have projects be delayed and, and to know everything we could about the area prior to starting that work. In this case, UW Milwaukee's Cultural Resource Management Group did the initial records review. They also went out and did shovel testing in the area to try to better define the limits. And then, you know, in an effort, you know, they prepared the archaeological data recovery plan, submitted it to the Wisconsin Historical Society for review and approval. They have not yet received review comments, but they are anticipating those any day now. So yeah, before any, you know, construction activity could take place, you know, they would be going out and, you know, exploring the entire area. We would be utilizing some of our staff from Streets Division to assist them with the excavation, you know, basically kind of peeling the top soil off to get them to that under, under soil layer that they need to conduct their research.
And I believe last summer when they were reconstructing Bay Shore Drive, they found skeletal remains and that cost was about forty thousand dollars from university. And I've seen the report and it's about half the size of the New York phone book.
Yes.
Before cell phones.
Yes, it is a pretty significant report that they do have to prepare and submit to the Historical Society.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. Mr. Robbie, under your, your letter or note to council, it says that under the fiscal impact, you state, you anticipate there likely be additional CIP amendment brought forward in the future to provide for reallocation of funding within the project as actual costs become more known. But yet in the bid that Ms. Knifeward got, it says representing not to exceed figure. So why would there be a change order unless it's less money than more money?
What, what I was attempting to say there, and it was a conversation we'd had at, at staff meeting, is, you know, the, the CIP budget that was approved in November, you know, had, you know, certain categories spelled out. And, you know, there may be a need to reallocate those categories. But yes, this agreement is a not to exceed amount to conduct that level of work. And unless there's something drastically different found out there than what they discovered during their shovel testing, I anticipate that their final cost will be less than this amount.
The original TIF budget called for, what was the cost estimate there? That was before we got this bid. And that's really what this is referring to.
I think fifty thousand for environmental.
It was only fifty thousand. So we know we need to come back with a budget adjustment for this, but we want to make sure that we're okay in other areas. And a lot of it's going to have to do with the scope of work that the council ultimately decides for Oshkosh Avenue and the streets that we're pushing into the north. So based on those things, we'll come back with a variety of budget adjustments once we know those exact numbers.
But the maximum in the budget adjustments won't be over one hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars, correct?
Correct. It's just that we're at fifty thousand. We're going to need a budget adjustment above the fifty thousand. We know it won't go above the one eighty-three number that you're, you're discussing.
Okay, Councilmember Palmary.
So I'm confused. How could you guarantee that it would not go above the one eighty-three if the scope document says? Okay, first of all, in Mr. Robbie's memo that Mr. Councilmember Herman was referring to, said that the area is now many, many times larger. If they're only saying this includes up to two hundred cultural features or three burial-related features, et cetera, what happens if they encounter more than that?
At this point in time, this estimate is based on all the information they gathered during their shovel testing earlier, last fall actually, which was used to define the area of analysis. Yes, there could be other things that they don't find because when they were doing their shovel testing, they did a five-meter grid search. You know, is there, could there be something in between there? Yes, but they would not be able to exceed this amount without coming back for a contract amendment.
So we can't guarantee that it won't go over the one eighty-three. So all right, I'll let that go for now, but I'm sure we're going to have more discussion. The clubhouse, was this like not done when the clubhouse was built? I don't know what year the clubhouse was built. I apologize.
Long before these rules were in place.
Before these requirements, I presume. So nothing of any of that nature was done.
Just same way that when Bay Shore was last constructed, there was no requirement back then for anything, which is probably why they just ignored what they found last time.
And that was a hundred years ago, on a good day.
I'll take your word.
I see no other questions on Resolution eighteen eight dash eighty-three. So would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Quid six.
Next is Resolution eighteen dash eighty-four, approve conditional use permit and specific implementation plan for an indoor personal storage facility, semi-colon two-fifth, twenty-one seventy-five through twenty-one eighty-five, South Kohler Street. It's a former J.C. Penney site. Plan Commission recommends approval. Did anyone register to speak to this?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I'm first, Mr. Roth, would you explain some of the difficulties we face developing that piece of land because of Whitman Field?
I'd be happy to. This is a very difficult site in the city of Oshkosh because of the airport overlay zone that takes care of most of this shopping center. You may recall a while back that the council had approved Sam's Club out there that Walmart Corporation ultimately said no to. Stores can go on there very easily. They're not considered what are called places of public congregation. But restaurants and hotels are considered places of public congregation. Office buildings are. And if you get good suggestions from residents, the suggestions are, why don't you put a hotel or a restaurant or an office building, which are excellent land use recommendations, but from regulatory standpoint, the FAA and the county really dictate how land uses can, can go there. And minimal numbers of people are, are really what they're looking for. And unfortunately, retail, big box stores aren't necessarily popping up everywhere. This would be a great location for that. That's why there was a penny's there at the time. But that land use is a little more challenging. As far as the location goes, if the airport wasn't there at forty-four and forty-one, it would be an outstanding location for, for restaurant or hotel with proximity to EAA. But then they have that little thing called an airport there that, that gets in the way of us being able to have more options for land uses out there. Beyond that, that's, that's the basic version of it. If you have any more questions, I'm sure Mr. Davis can, can talk about it as well.
Councilmember Palmary.
So let me get this straight. We're putting, we're allowing a large-scale personal indoor storage of bookends on either end of Keller Street because we got U-Haul up at Keller and Oshkosh Avenue. And then here we're looking at now another personal indoor storage. And it just so happens, I received a phone call from a gentleman this week. I don't believe he provided his name, who was a friend of someone who owns some property on Twentieth Avenue, who was also interested in doing indoor storage in one of the other strip areas. We did say no to that, apparently. Are we now going to turn, you know, all of the brick and mortar retail that are kind of going upside down into big warehouse storage areas? Is that what we're looking at?
I believe that's a policy decision for the council to make. I share your concerns.
And that was exactly the reason it's not on consent is that the Plan Commission had the same concerns. Ultimately, they did vote in favor, but it was a split vote at the Plan Commission. So the Plan Commission's torn on this as well.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I just have concerns about this gateway to the city. I mean, this is where our new arena, people are going to come in. People drive down this street. I understand the limitations of what can go in there, but it doesn't stop. New clothing start going in, super center grocery store. I mean, once this goes in there, it's there and we can't get rid of it. And it kind of kills the old Walmart property, too, because not a lot of businesses want to go next to a storage unit facility. I just, I look at it as, I mean, we already have a lot of storage facilities in Oshkosh. Why would we want to put one? why would we want to put one in probably our best retail area that we have right now? I mean, we don't know what the city's going to look like in ten years, but we know if there's a storage unit there, there's going to be nothing next to it.
If there's no further discussion, would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
No.
Crowsey?
No.
Peck?
No.
Palmary?
No.
Herman?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Lost zero-six.
Next is Resolution eighteen-eighty-five, approve amendment to twenty-seventeen capital improvement program, concrete sidewalk imprints new and rehabilitation, close per ins, eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and nine cents. Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one is registered.
Right, back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this just goes back to what I've been complaining about for the last year, year and a half, all these change orders. This work's already done. What happens, the council would say no. Where's the money going to come from to pay for it? If we have to approve these things, don't you think we should approve it and then the work gets done?
In this case, the majority of this work was requested by the property owners as there was, as the contractor was working through. There are a lot of people that requested additional work, sidewalk squares or driveway aprons be done, and then there was a few things that I believe our staff may have underestimated on when they prepared their bid totals, but it wouldn't have changed the end amount of work that needed to be done. Unfortunately, they didn't put, in some cases, enough quantity in for what they probably should have.
And I guess the other concern I have is, you know, we're pulling from the water utility twice, street lighting fund. We're constantly raising our water rates because of the debt. We're just adding more debt to the citizens of Oshkosh, more debt that we have to bond for. When does the staff finally say, you know what, we'll take it back to council before you go any farther?
The work related to the water utility operating budget is repairing street patches where water mains have broken and they've had to dig up the street in order to fix that water main break, and then the sidewalk construction contract is routinely utilized to fix the concrete streets. Streets Division will assist the water utility with generally fixing the asphalt streets. So the work that's being done from the water utility standpoint is fixing the street where they had to dig up and fix a water main break.
Okay, and that's fine, and that, I agree, we need to do those. I guess that would be nice to have that in the memo, to know what that is, because there's no information that that's what we're fixing, was patches from last winter's broken water mains and things like that. It just talked about, you know, water utility operating quantities adjusted to match final field conditions. What's that? I'm not an engineer, I don't know what that means. So I guess I'm just, again, these change orders, we constantly get them, and I get it, the old theory, we don't know what's in the ground until we get it there and dig it, but there's long-term ramifications, because we keep adding debt, and it has to get passed on to our citizens, and they constantly complain to us about the cost of their water utility rates going up every year. And LRS did that eight-year analysis, we're going to have to keep increasing our rates, and we just keep adding to it and adding to it. Somewhere, I think we need to figure out enough's enough for one year, and it don't go past that.
Councilmember Pansky.
Yeah, I think we should have included the reference to the water utilities, but those are, those are pretty standard, and probably took it for granted, but those are, that's the nature of the work. We have water main breaks going on right now.
And we'll have it this year with the deep frost, I'm sure we're way down this year, and I know I've seen a few patches on the northeast side of Oshkosh, so I know that they've been busy, so we'll have that too, so.
Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Robby, my concern with this was the amount as well, and I have been just as frustrated as Deputy Mayor Herman with these change orders and these amendments. And I would like to stress what he stated, that you did put some of that information in here, that there were some driveway approaches that were taken care of, and then you also stated that the cost of those repairs would be billed to those property owners. It would be nice in this, in this cost to have that breakdown of what exactly is going to be assessed then to those property owners, and what is then city responsibility. Just a little bit more information on that moving forward would be greatly appreciated on my end as well, so.
I apologize for that, I will work to get more information into these as we go forward. I apologize.
Thank you.
Did you no longer want to speak?
I don't know that one.
All right, I see no other lights lighting up, would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution eighteen-eighty-six, approve change order number two for public works contract number seventeen-zero-six, concrete sidewalk imprints new and rehabilitation, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-forty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Pam, did anyone sign up?
I have no one.
Back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Palmary.
I too had concerns about these change orders, and my question is, on that breakdown of this, looks like the change order amount is going up, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand for the sidewalk. Looking on the staff memo of February eighth from Steve Cody. So this one appears to be, again, where we're saying that it was requested by adjacent property owners. What streets are these, and how many properties are we talking about that it would increase by that much? Just sidewalk?
These numbers, this is for the sidewalk rehab area, which last year was a large area of the city on the north side and then on the west side. For the number of properties, it's approximately one-tenth of the city that is done annually on this. The sidewalk program, historically, we have not tracked on requests to see what those are, it is something we will be implementing going forward to try to track this better, to see how many requests beyond what our initial work estimate was, to try to track this better. But we're talking with staff, there were a large number of people that didn't want a single square left in between multiple squares that were removed. If we were only planning to do a third of their apron, because the rest of it was fine, for aesthetic reasons, they elected to have their entire apron done and pay for those costs. So that was where a large portion of those costs came from.
That's pretty significant.
It certainly is, and that's why I'm certainly not going to say that it is all of it. I do believe that we did underestimate some of those quantities, as Mr. Robby said on the initial bid. I'm not sure where that has happened yet, we haven't been able to track down the exact location, but my suspicion is that there may have been an area that either didn't get tabulated correctly in the spreadsheets or something that left the totals low.
Thank you.
And these, this item and one previous to it are interrelated?
Yes, I see that.
I see no other councilmembers which to speak to this resolution, I will ask the city clerk to take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is council discussion, direction of the city manager and future agenda items. There is nothing on here, so we will move to the second opportunity for citizens to address the council. Pam, does anyone register to speak?
I have no one registered.
It's now to councilmember announcements and statements. Councilmember Peck, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's that time of year again, March tenth, at three PM at the Oshkosh YMCA on Twentieth Street, the annual Oshkosh Police, Oshkosh Firefighters Guns and Hoses Game. This is an event that is put on by those two organizations, it raises money for charities. This year, it's going to an organization called Help Owners Maintain Equity, which provides low-income, which provides assistance to low-income people to maintain the equity in their home. It's a great opportunity to watch some very, very high-quality hockey, the refereeing, as we'll question that a little bit. But it is a great event, it's been around for eleven years, it has raised significant amounts of money, and it is just another way that our police and fire departments give back to the community. I would ask any of my fellow councilmembers to be there for the ceremonial puck drop, we'd like to have you for that. If any of you want to put on some stainless steel blades and black and white stripes, you're more than happy to jump out on the ice with me, because everybody's kind of shaking their heads. But again, and at our meeting in two weeks, Tony Olson, one of the organizers, will be here to give us a little bit more on it, but it's a great event. There is, they'll be giving away pucks, there will be raffles, things like that, so. March tenth, three PM at the Oshkosh YMCA on Twentieth Street.
Thank you. Next, we have Senate City Manager announcements and statements. The first is February twenty, twenty eighteen, the spring primary election polling site location changes, and the city clerk is asked to-
I'm handing off to the city clerk on this one.
Okay. Next Tuesday, February twentieth, is our first of four elections this year. The polls are open from seven in the morning till eight at night. Last fall, the council did approve changing for districts, districts five, six, eight, and ten. I've been working with the schools, getting the information out, information is out on our website, we're working with Oshkosh Media, and I felt this was just another opportunity to share this information with our citizens. So I want to just mention that the voters that used to vote at Washington School, District Five, they now vote at Trinity Lutheran Church, located at three-seventy Bowen Street, and there is a map that they're going to put up for us. And then moving on to District Six, the voters used to vote at Jefferson School, now they will go across the street to First English, which is located at ten thirteen Minnesota Avenue. Then District Eight, the voters from Franklin School will go down a couple blocks on Fifth Avenue to Saint Jude, the Apostle Parish, which is also known as Sacred Heart Site. And then the final one, Carl Trigor School, that has moved to Living Waters Church on South Oakwood Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pansky.
Pam, just a question on that. I know safety concerns have kind of gotten the polling places out of schools, with the exception of Alberta Kimball, then are we in any other schools in Oshkosh?
Yes, we are. Webster Stanley, we're still in that, at that location. That particular location, we go in the gym and we come out of the gym, we don't really interact into the school area. And then a lot of people refer to it as West High, but it's really the auditorium.
Right.
Yeah.
So you don't anticipate any other changes regarding this safety issue?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roloff, I believe you're on deck.
A few more things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just first notice of many, State of the City is Monday, March nineteenth, six PM, doors open, six-thirty State of the City address starts. Emily Springstroh with Oshkosh Media will be in touch with each of you soon to discuss your role in terms of handing out awards and things of that nature. We really appreciate the assistance you provide on that. And of course, the City Exhibit Expo, so the departments are preparing for all the little show and tell. Probably the big thing is going to be a presentation about Polco. In the presentation there, and our goal is that everybody in the room with a phone is going to walk out with the Polco app, or I won't let them leave. And speaking of that, we're going to have a Polco presentation at the next council meeting to just show you how it works and give you an idea of the technology that's available there. So that's State of the City. Good discussion, appreciate the feedback about the change orders and that. The one thing that was asked back in, during the budget, was there are a lot of change orders that council does not see because they don't meet the threshold in the code, either they're not high enough or they're reductions, and we just provided you that with an attachment. There's about a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars in net reduction in change orders, just gives you a rough idea, there are things that go down. If we, they're all about quantities, if our quantities exceed the contract, we have to come to council. Unfortunately, we have to come to council for the bad news, but we don't come to council for the good news. But when quantities are low, and our staff is always looking at quantities to make sure that we're okay, this is the net result. So we plan on doing this on a regular basis to give you these annual reports, because we just think it's good information for you.
Mr. Roloff? Along those lines, would it be too difficult to capture those savings, just to give alongside with this kind of report, so that we see when it comes in under as well as when it goes over?
Are you asking, that's what this is, is bringing you the, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
This is showing the change orders that went above and beyond. I'm wondering if, in the situations that you don't have to come to council, when it comes in under, if we could maybe also see that alongside.
That's what this is. These are all the change orders that we've done for the year. We wait until we do the final to make sure there's no net reduction change order.
Okay, so Highway Landscapers, for example, is one that went over, and the rest are-
That was an increase, but it didn't hit the threshold, any, it's fifteen-
I think what she's asking is the savings side. If we bid a project, say for a million-five, and it comes at a million, we save five hundred thousand dollars. Can we see that? What projects came in under our projected budget?
When the bid's under, the council will see that when they award the bid. This is when it exceeds, when it goes beneath even what the bid was at.
Okay.
So that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
All right. So these are all over budgets, but under the threshold that council has to take action?
No, these are not over budget, these are-
Most of these are negative change orders.
These are negative change orders, which means that, let's say the council-
Well, then maybe the wording needs to say negative change orders. Because the way I read it is, these are change orders that didn't meet the threshold, they had to come to council for approval.
That's why we put a negative number on those.
Oh, the parentheses.
Yeah, the accounting terminology of the parentheses around the number means negative. I couldn't make that a little more clear.
It's only under budget, we're saying.
Yes, okay.
It's under the bid.
Got it.
So appreciate that, you know, making sure that we know over, under bid, we can appreciate that feedback. So we plan on doing this, you know, on an annual basis, so you know that these things are here. Okay, next item was the cooperative purchase for our annual computer purchase through Information Services, and cooperative purchase for Ford Explorer for the Transit Division, that was approved in the budget. We went with an Explorer because the vans that were under the state contract did not include four-wheel drive, so we went with an Explorer instead. And then the update on Oshkosh Corporation, the update in public improvements, but the idea behind the presentation earlier in the meeting was really to give that to you early on in the meeting, when things are still fresh, so.
Did you skip thirty-three?
Thirty-three is the IT, those are the computers for IT. That's our annual purchase that we do through the state contract. I just said IT, yeah, that's in our budget, and those are all the, we pretty much know what the state bid is when the numbers for the budget, we have a pretty good idea already, so that's why it's almost dead-on with what the budget was.
We're at twenty-eight, nine forty-four.
Yep, and I think we did, I think we budgeted twenty-nine thousand or something like that. So those are just reports for the council. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
All right, Deputy Mayor Herman would like to make a motion to go into a closed session, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's your turn.
I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene in the executive session pursuant to nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin State Statutes, to discuss bargaining options, strategies, parameters, and terms related to the negotiation of an agreement with Oshkosh Corporation for the development of a portion of Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course.
Second.
Please take the roll.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
I now need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.